Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Good to see you, sir.
Um, and I'll get it turned in soon as that day. Be a couple of days late, but put no action. Uh, cause like Fisher County on some of these, if I can hear fifty to thirty-five.
Okay.
Go up on his feet.
Okay.
I want to really look at it on the re. Go up on my shoulder.
Sounds like a plan to me.
Okay. We're not gonna miss that out or something.
So wait a minute, you said three, I know a two. Okay. The personal policy.
Well, on that one, I mean, like.
Hi.
And, and the one there is, we're trying to stay on the insurance.
Yeah, that's even better.
All right, um, I've got ten o'clock, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order.
Having fun with things for today, Lord, we just ask you to, just to be with us, be with the sick Lord, and Lord, help us to do your will, in Jesus' name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge my flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Good morning, everybody, good morning, Kathy.
Good morning.
That wasn't quite, we need, we need bring it up, farm up on that a little bit. Wasn't quite like the full house, was it? Okay, this time any person with business before the court not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the court, no formal action could be taken on these items at this meeting, each speaker will be limited to three minutes. I don't see anybody, so, uh, we'll go ahead and do presentation, the discussion of department head committee and board reports.
Looks like everybody's busy, Judge.
Yeah. Any discussion on those?
Yeah, that's true, and the total, I can see the total one taking two. Usually there's some amount that's made, I guess I'll be yes down the.
The border.
Well, they did build them a mass awning over there. Something we should have done.
Still can't.
Yes.
All right, court to consider approval of previous court minutes.
Judge, I make mention that we adjutant of previous court.
All right, all in favor?
Good job.
Court to discuss and consider a precinct project schedule and staffing.
Oh mercy, one more one frame, filling potholes.
One number.
We, we are.
Putting bandages on everything.
Have control of truck traffic coming across wrong roads, can't have nothing to get stopped yet, but it's, we're, we're working on it.
Court to accept, consider accepting donations, I didn't see any to go, were there any donations?
Two in there.
Two in there, maybe I seen assistance center.
Golf course.
Golf course. People continue to give.
There's actually two for the golf course, they're stapled together, and then there's missing stuff. There's one for two thousand, one for fifteen hundred to the golf course, and then regular, um, meals and stuff.
Someone asked about irrigation, and they're still sending money for, paying for irrigation.
Yes, and I did notice when I was going through some of the reports that, um, I don't think that Heather is aware of, that she also needs to submit monthly, uh, donation report. Going to be getting with her to show her how to do it and send it her way, so that she'll know to submit the monthly donations to the court as well. Cause her donations have, she went from having like six hundred dollars in her, she has a little over nine thousand in there now, so.
Well, we need to.
I'd like to motion accept the donations to the golf course and citizens.
All right, fifteen hundred to the golf course and.
Well, there's two, and two thousand.
And two thousand.
Oh, okay.
You, you don't have two, there should be two, um, for the golf course, they were stapled together, one was two thousand, one was fifteen hundred, like.
Yeah, they are. All right, I'll get this straight here in a minute, all right, and then we voted, so.
Is it Monday?
All right, court to discuss and consider approval of the renewal rates for county employee medical insurance.
We have Kathy Davenport here, our TAC representative, um, for health benefits, um, she can kind of go over our plan and a little bit of what we are looking at, especially for our two members.
Um, as Judge Gibson Carissa said, my name is Kathy Davenport, and I am your employee benefits consultant for this Northwest region, which is basically anything from I twenty north up through the Panhandle. For the, the two new commissioners that, you know, might not understand TAC or where we come from, um, we provide a lot of the services for county government because we understand the uniqueness of how counties have to operate, and because we are county owned and county governed, we were created through state legislation, legislation, we have to operate the same way county governments do. And a lot of the employees that are in the position like I am, we come from county government, I served as Fisher County Treasurer for five years before joining TAC, so I understand a lot of, of the difficulties that y'all face, um, we are a self-funded pool, so basically what that means is what the monthly amounts that y'all pay in premiums, we have to call them contributions because we're not an actual insurance carrier, it's a pool. But we take those contributions to pay the claims for your county, and then if there's by chance something left over, it goes into the pool and is kind of spread out, and then at the end of the year, we look at how all the groups did overall, and that's how we set our rates. Um, we, after we set the overall needed amount, we look at each group individually, um, and unfortunately, what I've discussed over the last several years with Scarry County, y'all just cannot seem to catch a break on your claims, and there are some, some very costly, serious medical, medical conditions that employees in the county currently has, and has had, have, have had for, for multiple years, like I said, I've been with TAC six years now, and some of these, they've been here since before I was, so, those are just things, and that's where the county really kind of benefits from being in the pool, is because most insurance carriers go out with at least a ten percent increase on their renewal rates every single year. Because they are for-profit companies, they have stockholders that they have to get that, uh, profit for, we're not, our stockholders are our counties, the, the groups that are within the pool and participating. So as long as we can keep that as close to zero as we can, the better off we are and the better off the, our groups are, we're a little bit better about being able to spread that risk throughout all of the groups. Um, our five-year average on our, our rate increases is five percent. We do a lot of comparison with Blue Cross Blue Shield and United because there are two closest competitors in this market, and there, this year, Blue Cross Blue Shield went out with an average of a twelve percent increase, and that was for the groups, their, their individual groups that were running really, really well. For Scarry County this year, y'all got a seven percent increase, our average renewal needed amount was five point nine percent, but because your claims were over a hundred percent, and with the diagnosis attached to those claims, y'all were assessed at a seven percent increase. Um, and Kirsten has provided you with different ways that y'all can calculate, um, how you want to absorb that seven percent, also in the renewal, there, we always attach with the renewal other options for coverage if the county, if the group is interested in, um, I will tell you, the plan that y'all currently have is kind of in the middle of the road, that's where a lot of our groups are. Because we realize, just like y'all do, you go up on that deductible or go up on the total maximum out of pocket, sometimes that may not be what's easily mapped by employees, or it's really hard for them to meet just the deductibles, because we also realize your salaries, you may not be able to match what is out, and what I refer to as, as the real world. Because y'all have to report all this back to the taxpayer, y'all are responsible to them and how you spend their money, so we understand that, so we come at it from a value perspective of, you know, can we keep this low enough for the employees to, to meet this and afford to still go get you that they need, do y'all have any questions so far? Just kind of whine, and honestly, whenever I first started dealing with the judge and Kirsten this spring, I wanted to quit. Um, because our claims, the pool as a whole was so bad, and I think I actually even made the comment, um, to Judge Hicks, was I, I was ready to just give up. Because we were looking at for the first time ever having to go out with a double-digit needed amount increase, which would have put y'all probably in about the twenty percent range. Um, just because that's, that's how the claims were running, we still have a lot of COVID claims, um, since the beginning of whenever we started getting COVID claims, we have paid out over thirty-two million dollars in COVID claims. First year, now keep in mind, nobody knew what was going on, what the impact was gonna be, so there was no budget, no additional budget. The second year, we were like, okay, yeah, no, we need to add in, you know, a little bit of a layer there and count for that increase, so we did that, but still, over basically a year and a half to not quite two years, thirty-two million dollars, it was, it's actually, no, I'm sorry, thirty-seven million. That's a lot of money that is having to be spent that y'all are sending to us to try and take care of, so, um, it was very costly, but the other thing coming out of COVID is that we have found, is our cancer claims are skyrocketing. Because people during that time period weren't, you know, they couldn't go get their cancer screenings, they were going in for treatments if they had cancer, but they couldn't go get their screenings, and so we're finding a lot of new diagnosed diagnoses coming out of this, unfortunately, some of them are, you know, because with cancer, they say, within three to five years, there may be a relapse, those are some of them, but the majority are brand new cancers, and what's even scarier is it's breast cancers, is the one that's, that's our highest right now. And that's not just within the women, within our Texas counties, it's men also, so, just kind of a plug there for any employee, go get your screenings, please, okay? Just because the earlier those cancers are found, the easier, or they are to treat, and I always say this, it's easier on your budget because they're gonna be helpful for you. So you're not having to find someone to, to kind of fill in or shuffle things around, but it's also less on the claims dollars, and it's most definitely better for the employee, and at the end of the day, that's who we're all here fighting for, are those employees. On the dental, we had kept those rates as low as we possibly could for a couple of years, that three point, three point three percent increase is a little bit higher than what we normally go on the dental, but like I said, we were trying to avoid going up on that rate as long as we possibly could, and honestly, we, uh, we should have done it last year. And that's kind of one of the things that y'all will see, is we will put something off on going up on those rates, um, as long as we can, hoping that there will be, we'll see it turn around. But that's, that's the reason for the three point three percent, because normally we're around one percent, one to two percent. Um, on the vision, uh, which is a voluntary plan, um, that one, there was no increase, they actually were going to give us a decrease on the rate. But what we opted to do was to flip that and keep the rate the same, but be able to provide a better benefit, so for your employees that, that have that vision plan, co-pays are dropping a little bit for the, for the usage, the benefits are going up for the employees, um, they'll have a little bit better usage, hopefully, out of that program, so that's, that's how we did that. And looking at the claims, you've got one claimant that's close to pushing a million dollars within the last twelve months, and that's honestly your highest one, um, you are just a little, you are a little over a hundred percent right now on the client's experience. And this is another thing that kind of separates us from other insurance carriers, is whenever we calculate those clients' experiences, because they factor in administration charges, and they're, uh, they're portioned for their income, so they may start out, instead of starting out at a hundred percent and going from there, because their administration charges and things like that, actually, their break-even point is about eighty-five percent. For the pool, because like my salary does not come from the money that y'all submit, I am a Texas Association of Counties employee, so our main corporation is the one who pays my salaries. Uh, my salary, not salaries, I wish there was more than one sometimes, um, but my salary and the other consultants. So we are able to keep our break-even point, giving y'all a little bit more leeway on those claims, we keep it around ninety-four, ninety-five percent consistently, year over year. And whenever we talk to the people that know the insurance industry, they honestly tell us, the only ones who run is, run more efficient than we do is social security and medic, Medicare.
Those are efficient?
Theirs, theirs is, is around five percent, it's amazing, you would think it'd be a lot worse than that, especially if you're having to deal with paperwork, but they, they keep their admin charges down as low as they possible can, it's strange. I kind of went through it kind of fast, do y'all have any questions regarding the renewal?
The, did you have, were you?
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
I was just wanting to, you'd talk more about the options of HSAs and FSAs, and those kinds of things, and the benefits of that, and whose, are there other counties that are doing it, and is it beneficial?
Um, well, we have, I, I have a couple of counties that have HSS, um, those HSAs are what we call their base plans, because the, the way an HSA works, with HSAs, and I'm gonna be honest, coming from a county employee perspective, I'm not a big fan, just because of, of starting out, um, because with an HSA, the employee does have some coverage, but it's more like for major medical, because they have to pay that deductible before the insurance comes in and pays. That means if they're on daily medications, they have to pay that total cost of those medications, now, all of that cost that they pay out goes towards that deductible, so it does build up. My thing is, is you go from a county employee that's having to factor now that amount into their budget, will we start seeing employees who, who stop taking medications and not going to the doctor? Um, a lot of employers, you know, employers aren't required to contribute to an HSA, but we say, if you can, if you're making this move to cut back on your monthly or yearly for your budget purposes, seriously consider contributing some of that savings to the employees' HSAs to give them a little bit of breathing room, because an HSA is only going to work as if the employee is also contributing monthly to that HSA account, and it typically, for it to work, work well for the employees, it takes, it takes a year of them contributing out of their paychecks to, to get that built up. I would also seriously reconsider, reconsider it with some, because of some of the diagnostic categories that you have within the county. I mean, let's, you know, you've got several cancers, it'd be really hard for an employee to go through cancer treatment and have to pay that out of pocket, I, you know, so, like I said, starting out, I, I've had an HSA and I liked it, getting through that first year was a nightmare with, with two children, that would be that, um, so it, it, it can work, and because the insurance does not come in and start picking up until the deductibles are met, it is, it's a lower on the monthly cost premium or contribution wise.
So you're saying these other counties that have done this have gone county-wide with it, not just give the option for the employee to have that plan in place?
Um, one county just, is Hutchinson County, and theirs is their base plan, so that is the one that if the employee chooses that plan, they can come in and pay a hundred percent of that monthly premium or contribution. And they will also even contribute a small amount, they actually decreased their contribution amount this year, um, but then the employees have the option of that base plan or buying up to a co-pay plan, and they pay the difference between the premiums for, for that co-pay plan.
But there, there still probably isn't any leeway for the employee to use that account for other outside of regular, uh, what is considered by the industry of payments to, like, for instance, buying, uh, nutrients, buying vitamins or minerals or, or whatever, because they want to live a healthier life and not have to pay, that can get really expensive if you're, if you're.
If you're paying for it out of pocket, yeah.
And so, that, and as Healthy County is there, uh, trying to, how do you manage, how are you looking in the future to managing employees, because there's proven facts, and even the medical industry, the, not, not just the, the allopathic part, not just the naturopathic part, but the allopathic part is now realizing that there are things there that will make a difference in people's lives and whether or not they actually get cancer. Exercise, balanced nutrition, things like that, uh, what are y'all looking at going forward, because from my understanding, there's not a large percentage of employees throughout Texas that are under these plans, that are actually using Healthy County?
Yeah, and a lot of it is, there, there is a mindset, not, not just within the county employees within Texas, this is nationwide.
Oh, that's.
It's, the, the thing, the mindset is, well, my doctor said I can just take this pill and I don't have to change anything I do, that is the mindset we are up against. Um, and it's getting them to understand, yeah, you do have to make change, if you're as serious about getting, being healthier, yeah, we, there are things we have to change, um, and just, just changing that mindset, and that's, that's our, always our biggest.
Sure.
For Texas people, and, and I'm, I am one of those, don't tell me I can't do something, because it's gonna be one of those, well, I'll just show you, you know, and that's, that's the other part, part of that, so it's not just making that change, and a lot of people that's, um, Ashley Kuratin, one of the wellness consultants, she's always going, keep in mind, baby steps. Because, you know, if you're gonna start working out and you go out and you buy all those exercise clothes, go buy some new shoes and all this sort of kind of stuff, by the time you get to the gym and start working out, you're tired, you're already tired of it. Take it in baby steps, um, and that, that's one way of being successful at it, is because that's the other part of it, we've got to be able to, to help the employees even taking that one step. And as a consultant, I get a lot of windshield oil, I spend ninety percent of my day on the road traveling from county to county. My biggest issue, and y'all can tell, I'm not slimming, trimming, and all this sort of kind of stuff. It's easier for me to stop at a drive-through window and get something to take on the road with me to eat while I'm going in between, or stop at an office for a burrito. You know, those, those are challenges that we have to walk along and say, we understand this is easiest, but it's not always the best choice or the smartest choice.
It's not easy to have cancer.
It's, no, it's not.
It's not easy to have UTIs all the time, it's not easy to, I mean, once you get that, and people say, well, I'll never get it, you know, but then, those are the people that do.
Yeah.
And they then wish that they had done differently, but now they're doing whatever the allopathics say do, uh, in order to, cause they want to live, or they, they want to be better, feel better, do better. But, so, since we can't get, you, you say it's very difficult to change that mindset, then maybe we need to do, like some organizations have realized, and go to the kids, so maybe there needs to be a, some type of a training, uh, an educational approach with schools for kids that are going to be coming to counties and working in counties, uh, and it would also benefit businesses as well, and maybe they would even contribute and start with them, so when they do come to work here, they've already got the mindset that we're looking for, because we're not changing.
Yeah.
People's minds that are already here.
Yeah.
And so, spend some of that money, get businesses to, uh, in with you to start educating kids at an early age so that they've already got the mindset, I want to be healthy. And then you gotta also educate our federal government so that they know that their plan for nutrition is upside down, you know, so, okay.
But now what, um, basically what it, the, uh, the items that you can spend with that HSA aren't set by us, it's federal government regulation.
And that's, yeah, that's true.
So, I mean, I'm just glad that they did open it back up to where you can go and get, you know, because there for a while, like a first aid kit, to, to redo a first aid kit, you can spend money, HSA money or, or, uh, FSA money on that. I would say if starting HSAs, moving to that type of account down the road, I would strongly suggest implementing a flexible spending account, that employees can go ahead and start getting used to contributing some of that towards that, it also helps, helps lessen some of the burden that they have to pay out of pocket for some things, because you can use it to pay for deductibles, co-pays, prescriptions. I use mine for my daughter's dental work and our glasses, so, you know, that just kind of helps, helps lessen that burden.
But the choices are pretty limited.
Choices are kind of limited, yeah.
So, wow, okay.
This year, we do have the option to add on an FSA.
Yes, they did.
We haven't necessarily had before.
But it's still limited, I mean, it's limited to, you can't really utilize it if you. I mean, it's limited to, you can't really utilize it if you want really to be healthy.
Yes. It's an option that we've never had before.
I, well, there's also a third option there that it talks about as well, which I never have looked into.
Which option? The HRA?
HSA and FSA and then one more.
HRA. Oh, HRA, that is where, um, y'all, the employees are going ahead and maybe their deductible and y'all will reimburse for med- for medical expense. The savings to the county would be on those employees that don't usually go to the doctor and meet those.
Savings to the county, but no savings to the individual.
Right.
That's the way insurance works.
Like I said, I'm not a big fan. I, HRAs, because in Fisher County, what we did was we made a plan change and because of the savings, we went up on the deductible a thousand dollars. That thousand dollar difference, we reimbursed the employees. Um, we did not budget sufficiently, um, because typically over the year, we would have maybe five people, over the last couple of years, five people to get reimbursed. Well, then we hit one year that just about every single employee met that amount and we didn't budget for it. So, and then things got a little bit tougher and we just kind of had to do away with the program. So, and that's how an HRA would work.
So, talk a little bit about, since we're talking about insurance and reduction of insurance and the reduction of cost and, and all of this, talk a little bit about, for those that don't know, the program that is in place, the Healthy County, how it, how it actually works, how you get free, uh, watch that will actually count your steps for you and if you do it and you don't even go out and exercise, just by you walking to your car and back and, and other play, going upstairs, downstairs, how that you actually get benefits from that. You get points and you're able to get gift cards and, and lots of different things just by wearing the, the free item.
Yeah.
Thank you, just did.
Um.
Yeah, like I said, but, but you gotta know how to get there.
Yeah, and, and we do.
Utilize it.
Um, because honestly, there, there are ways that counties can save money simply by changing the insurance plan that is offered. If that's all you're looking at is, you know, how can we save on what we're paying out? Whenever you change plans for that reason, you're basically just moving the monkey onto the employee's back. Because whenever you change the plans, it increases their deductible or copays or, you know, something like that. So that, we kind of use that as a last resort. But we also understand to get some of this to reverse is we do, we have to get employees, you know, participating with our wellness program. And the wellness, wellness program is not just the activity portion. We have programs that are there for diabetics because again, that, that is our highest population them and the high blood pressure people is, well, if I just take this, I don't have to change anything, I don't have to do anything, I can still keep, you know, all this other going. And that's not the mindset because both of those conditions are designed to tear down a person's body. And unfortunately, the medication to keep that regulated is doing damage to a person's body. Um, so for those two, we have to really catch it before those two diseases are impactful. So we have a, wait, we have weight, uh, weight management programs that are available. Um, I'm a stress eater. You know, so that, that's where my huge problem is. Um, but the wellness program in, in comp, in, in circles a lot of different programs. And we're starting to come at it from a holistic approach. Um, but the, the program that Commissioner Williams was referring to is our activity challenges that employees can participate in. And it's, like I said, it can be as simple as instead of calling someone, whenever they're right next door, getting up and actually going to their office. Um, because that's kind of one of the things we've learned coming out of COVID, is more comes across and more can get done if done, if, if, is done person to person and not over the phone or through email. Um, but it's just things such as that, parking a little bit further away in the parking lot and getting those steps. And a lot of people do not realize actu- actually how many steps a day they get until they start tracking them. So what we do is the association will pay for a thirty dollar subsidy every two years for every single employee that has insurance through, uh, through our groups to get a tracking device. And that can be a Fitbit or Garmin, um, or you can use the thirty dollar subsidy towards an Apple Watch. But not only that, I'm getting steps while doing this presentation because I'm up, I'm talking, I'm talking with my hands. But because the movement is keeping my heart rate up, keeping that blood flowing. And it's pushing oxygen throughout my body. So that will automatically make me a little bit healthier. It's that circulation piece. But employees, if they go to tracking their steps, they participate in these programs and once you get your tracker, you sign up one time, we've got four challenges throughout the year. And if employees complete those challenges, they get what we call fifteen dollar boomer bucks per challenge that they can go online and redeem for, for prizes. But the other aspect of it is because Blue Cross Blue Shield has been at this for a couple of years, I say a couple, for several years, they have created their own tool. So when a member goes, gets a device, whether they use that subsidy or not, if they also sync it with their Blue Access for Members account, they're earning blue points. So they're getting credit at both places. Blue Access for Members, you get better point, it's a better point system, you earn more points. But they also have a lot of cool, uh, things that you can go online and redeem. Um, my first two years as treasurer, I did that. And I literally bought the entire Wii system with all accessories and the games and didn't have to pay anything for it. It was shipped to me. Since then, I've bought a KitchenAid mixer with my blue points. So there's, there's a lot of, a lot of good things that employees can go online and redeem those points for. But not only is the employee being rewarded by participating in these programs, but the county also gets money back for employees' participation to keep the wellness program going. Um, if we come out and do a presentation to the employees, whether we provide the lunch, if we just come out and set up a table and we're accessible to the employees to talk to them about the wellness program, we find every way imaginable to get y'all credit, um, for this. Employee, the employer is getting rewards, money back to keeping this going. And the other thing about the renewal is because, was it last year or the year before? This is year two of that county specific incentive.
Year one.
Year one, we're finishing up on year one. Um, the county implemented a county specific incentive that if the employees will go get an annual physical. And that can be, you know, if you go in, you have blood work done, you know, things like that, you know what, what they call know your numbers, um, they get a fifty dollar gift card. But it's amazing how many employees do not go and get that done. And a lot of these, uh, several of the wellness programs that I'm gonna plug, Levango, um, that's available, these are all available at no additional cost to the employees. If there's a cost associated with it, it's a claim like Levango. It is a claim. But Levango helps our members with diabetes or high blood pressure better manage those conditions. Um, on the diabetic side, it covers, they get a frequent recorder, but it will cover all of their supplies needed to better manage that condition. And if you aren't aware of how much even testing strips cost, most of our plans, those are a tier two copay. And that's every single month. And if something happens and you have to test more than once a day, that gets really expensive within a year. For the county, it's literally a sixty-five dollar claim per month. And I can tell you, that's cheaper than what, than what you're getting billed for, for the claims for the strips. Um, but what we've been finding out from employees and from our own experiences, those members who have high blood pressure and diabetes, because you may go see your primary care physician, but if you're going to a specialist to, to manage your, your diabetes, that primary care physician may not know of all the medications that you're taking. And what we see a lot of the times is diabetic medications and high blood pressure medications find each other. And with Levango, you get a coach and they get all of that information. And they know, you know, what's going on and if a member, and, and I cannot expl- I cannot describe sufficiently how often this happens, we will have a road and bridge hand out on our dirt road working. And next thing we know, an ambulance and a helicopter is being called in for because they aren't better managing their, their conditions. Um, I had this happen to one of my road and bridge hands while I was treasurer in Robie. Scared the life out of us because his, he was driving a maintainer and it did not stop. And he lived, he literally went unconscious with a massive heart attack. So, I mean, luckily he's still with him. He's doing better, but he's one of those, he's not following doctors' orders. So like I said, all of this together and like I said, we come out, we explain this to the employees, we'll be more than happy to and talk a little bit more about the programs. But the biggest thing, we're trying to eliminate the barriers. That's, that's how the wellness program was designed, is to eliminate as many of those barriers to getting the employees to the doctor, making sure, just starting out, they're okay. And then giving them ways to better manage their conditions.
Thank you, Beth.
No problem. Um, the other part of that, um, with your, with the decision on what you want to do about the renewal rates is also deciding if you want to keep that county specific, uh, incentive in place. Um, I don't have numbers on how successful that has been. I will tell you, normally first year, county specific incentives aren't real successful. Um, it's year two where we start seeing a huge difference because then employees get to talking about, hey, did you get yours? Or in some cases, we have counties that, um, employees have to contribute towards the monthly cost of their insurance. And so they're gonna go make sure they're getting that annual exam to keep from having to pay that. So like I said, uh, hopefully they still be able to have that information available.
We've had about thirty employees, we've reminded them twice or three times on, um, check stubs to get it, but we've had, we have about thirty employees that have gone and gotten their annual physicals and.
And I bet a large percentage of those that haven't didn't read a thing you've put in their.
Probably not, because it amazes me how many people don't look at their check stubs.
So, well, and we also need to look at, because y'all do have a pretty high incidence of high blood pressure and or diabetics within your population. Um, they're, they're getting, because for those two conditions, to get your medications renewed every year, you do have to go have blood work. That's an annual physical. So there's just not submitting the information.
Stacy gives me those numbers.
Okay.
So, um, so, because I, she gives me every quarter, people who have gotten that, um, went coding on our health insurance.
Yeah.
Um, but even then, it's still only about thirty.
Yeah, so there's, and it could be, maybe the doctors aren't coding them as annual physicals. That's the other, um, the other thing we're trying to get out to the employees and I'll go ahead and tell y'all, I realize I'm taking up a lot of time. When an employee goes and has an annual physical, like my doctor, before he ever leaves the office, he's like, is there anything else we need to talk about? Is there something else going on? Say no. Go back for a second visit because whenever you say yes, my big toe hurts, that allows them to change the coding.
And it's no longer an annual.
And it's no longer an annual exam. So there could be a lot of annual exams that aren't being coded as annual exams. So it's, and it's not anything malicious that they're doing, it's just.
They make more money coding it that way. When you code for something other than a health assessment, you're getting, that's the way Medicare works and so does insurance. Uh, what about using our own, our twenty-four seven nurse online or, uh, telephone or doctors online? Are, are we actually getting better at doing that?
Um, I, I haven't, I haven't seen, I haven't seen a recent report, I can pull one. Um, we did see this last year, a huge increase just overall in MD life usage. And that is one of the things with this renewal is our board did opt to waive that ten dollar copay again for another year. So employees can use that program for a zero dollar copay and if I need a prescription, the doctor will write it. Um, but we are seeing an increase in that. Um, typically what we see whenever it comes to ER utilization is if it's over the weekend or new, new parent. It's amazing how many new parents make unnecessary trips to the ER. Um, and I was one of them, I can't knock them, I was one of them with, with mine.
Mine too.
And I, I, I fight it now with my grandbabies, but yeah, I was one of those parents. Um, but typically it's whenever something happens over the weekend and y'all don't have an urgent care facility here. So their options are make the drive to Lubbock or go to the ER.
Depending on the time of day. You have a wellness clinic.
Yeah. Well, yeah, it's Monday to Friday, eight to five.
Eight o'clock on Friday night or Saturday night then.
Um, but then we also have the twenty-four hour nurse line. Um, to use the O B life, you need to be on the benefits to get that, that zero dollar copay. Um, but the twenty-four hour nurse line is literally, it's a line that you call that's manned by registered nurses. They know what they're talking about and it's kind of a triage service. They will tell you whether or not they think you need to go to the ER or if it's something that can wait till Monday if it's over the weekend. Or, you know, or how to handle a situation until you can't get medical assistance. Um, we've had a couple of instances of, I've used it for my niece and nephew who, which of course were not on my insurance, but they had a really bad asthma. I never really had to deal with asthma, but they helped me get through that until we could get off better. The other one of it, like I said, they did not have to be on the insurance. If you've got a neighbor that you're concerned about is, is you might think they're having an heart attack, you call them, they're gonna tell you to either hang up, call nine-one-one, get them to the emergency room. And we have had this happen, the nurse line actually kept the person on the phone and called the local sheriff's office to get nine-one-one for the, the member's assistance. And that was within the Northwest Territory, we had that happen. So, you know, there's a lot of resources out there to help get those, keep those claims low. But for y'all, until we can get some of these conditions, and I will tell you, you do have one prior cancer claimant that is still claimed there, that's not, and we're cruising on five years.
That's good.
So.
Okay. Also on our county specific incentive, um, it's the fifty dollar gift card or a PTO day.
Unless you're elected official.
Yeah.
And you don't have a choice.
And you don't have a choice. Thank you, Kathy. Any more questions for Kathy?
So several of y'all have asked for different options. Um, I gave them to y'all all this morning, um, for y'all to decide what you would like to do with that seven percent.
It is in the budget. The seven percent increase.
Correct.
If you do an option, just like Kathy said, just going to give the employees a pay decrease. Yes, that's what we gotta think.
Quick question.
Most of us know that.
Didn't we go to January 1? Are we still January 1 deductibles?
We changed from October.
Well, that's what I thought was the renewal, I didn't know, being in October. I thought we would end it.
Time at the beginning of the year.
We haven't necessarily seen the full effect of going to a higher deductible yet. And next year, we'll kind of be a little more tailing as to how that higher deductible has kind of affected our plan.
I personally don't want to put in more burden on the employees. It was budgeted for. I would personally like to see options.
I certainly agree. We got the COLA that's nowhere near what our inflation is. Well, actually, right now, you can buy an I-bond, which is a treasury bond, that's connected to inflation, and it's 9.6%. The only bad thing is, you can't put the $10,000 in it. But it's, I mean, that shows you right there, that, you know, we're 9.6% right now. And got 5.9%, so we're already got a pay decrease. I just don't see how you can add it, put it in additional parking.
What is this? Kirsten alluded to it a little bit, but on your, we pay for employee. Can you explain a little more of that?
Employee-only is the least expensive plan that we offer. So, we also have the majority, well, not anymore. But at one time, we had the majority of employees on the employee-only plan. I feel that that's a good base to cover the employee-only plans at 100%, because it's the least expensive plan. The other ones go up, including, I mean, if you look at the employee and family, you can cover approximately 2.5 employee-only's for one employee and family.
With the way these are all laid out, 75 employees would get none, but the rest of them, or 84 employees, would be penalized by having to pay more.
It's not necessary penalization. They have dependents on their plan.
But their cost is gonna pull up. So, if you took.
But if you also look at it, is not the employee only being penalized because they are only covering employee only? It costs about $32,000 to have an employee and family, and only costs about $12,000 to have employee only. Anything we provide is a benefit.
Sure, but are they? Seems to me that all employees, if we were gonna cover employee, employee, not just employee only, but employee, then the entire cost for the employee would be covered. So, let's see, 998 to 1,200 is 200 and some odd dollars difference. 998 to 1,509 is 5,000 dollars for employee and spouse. 1,500 for employee and family currently. If we, with the ones that we have here, 84 people's insurance is gonna go up, while the employee only pays nothing.
Those are the numbers I was asked to provide.
Sure.
So, those are the numbers that I provided.
Thank you.
You know, it's difficult enough to find people to work in the county because of the difference in pay between us and industry. And if you, if you have a family that isn't being covered anymore, children, spouse, a lot of these people that are working here are working here for that benefit. And if you take that benefit away. But most employers in the outside world pay the employees' insurance. Most employers in the outside world are paying a whole lot more to the employees again. You just came out of the oilfield industry.
You're right.
You know what the pay is out there, and going up. I mean, start him right now. But they're also working more hours.
I think Kathy can also talk about.
I'm not talking about the total amount they make, I'm talking about the hour they wage is way higher.
Terry?
I'm sorry.
I think Kathy can talk specifically to county and what county industries are doing.
Yeah, sure.
Typically, what the majority of my groups up here, and I've got 62 groups, is they cover the employee only at 100%, because, simply because the fact that they cannot meet the outside industry salary. They do not contribute towards dependent coverage at all, the majority. Whenever I look at those 62 different groups, I've got five that provide dependent subsidy, that the county picks up a portion of the dependent coverage. I wish more did, because it's just not affordable on a county employee's salary to pay that much. And whenever we look at those five different groups, they're just like scary county. They have the outside industry within their county. My smaller counties that are just strictly farming counties, those are the ones that they do pay the 100%, but do not supply any type of dependent coverage. And typically, what we are seeing, especially because a lot of my commissioners in this territory still work full-time within their oil and gas industry jobs. And they do, they look at, I've got a new judge, that's literally, he has his own business in the oil and gas industry. And he's like, I don't understand why I'm only paying this little for my employee's coverage, but the county is paying this. And there's about $1,000 difference there. And I said, well, let's sit down, look at the plans that you are providing to your employees outside of the county. It's the HSAs, but it's, for an employee, it's a $5,000 deductible. So, keep in mind, that employee technically does not have coverage till they've paid $5,000 out of their pocket. Yeah. And the county has a very low deductible. Their deductible is not even $1,000. They still have a very rich plan. So, you know, there's part of the difference. The county is paying 100% of that monthly cost and still subsidizing to have the dependents, the spouses and the children on. He's not covering 100% of the monthly cost in his private business. The employees are having to pay. But the pay difference is almost double between the two also. And so, that's what we're seeing. And I sat down with them for about three hours, and we looked at all of this. So, you know, that's what we're seeing. Like I said, out of 62 groups, I've got five that are still subsidizing dependent coverage. And with y'all, I've got one of those five. And typically, what we see is whenever a county employee is willing to sacrifice their pay to put their family on the coverage, it's because one of those dependents is very, very sick. In y'all's case, it's not your dependents who are driving those claims. It's the employees that are driving the claims. So, having, having those dependents on is helping you, because that's more money to paying those claims. Because I can guarantee you, if you just completely dropped the dependent subsidy, and I asked not to do that, you're going to have half your population drop. And it will completely put you upside down, even worse than what you are. Because those are the ones that are helping build that stock.
The healthier hip in the seat.
But that's, you know, the other thing you need to, on, if you can't come close to the salary, and it's the same in every Texas county. People don't go to work for the county because of the money that they're making. It is for the benefits, and that's why they stay. Between the health benefits and the retirement, because you really can't match it when it's out in the open market.
Doing some calculating, looking at the option three, flat 12%. If we were to do the employee only, go to 88% that the county pays. Just so we have some numbers. It's, for the employee and child, they're making $16 less. They're losing $16 off that raise that they got. Employee and children, employee and spouse are about $50 less per paycheck of that raise that they would get. So, they'd only get about a third of the 5.9%. And that's with the 12% increase.
And that's even if the 5.9% was actually a raise, which it wasn't. It was actually trying to be able to take the money that you receive and buy the same goods and services that you received before. And whenever it's 9.6% or more, you're not doing that. You're not buying the same groceries or the same, living the same standard, because it's not possible to do it with products going up nearly 10%. So, that's an additional cost, actually, that makes that even higher.
Any more discussion?
That's the thing, it's county, I pay the employees.
Okay.
I like the number, option three.
Option three, flat 12%. I don't disagree with paying the employee only, but I don't think that we should add burden to the other half of the employees, add more burden to the other half of the employees.
One more.
If you look at the current rates, employee and family are currently paying 12%.
Okay, but they're gonna get an increase. Employee and child's gonna go from 122 to 158 for 14 people. Employee and children, for 28 people, will go from 133 to 197. Employee and spouse will go from 203 to 264. Employee and family will go from 313 to 334. So, it seems to me that.
What's the thing, you'll save the county?
You can look at it, currently approximating for 2022, health insurance costs about 2.5 million. What was budgeted as far as approximate, again, because things change as employees change, approximately 2.7. With option three, you stay right around the 2.7.
I won't vote to increase the premiums for 84 employees. But I will accept the motion.
There's a lot of rab insurance, I can roll.
What's the additional cost to cover employee only, just that without increasing others?
It's about, well, on our current plan, it's about $30,000, because employee only is paying $36.
276, 2,760, or 70,000.
Well, no matter what you do, then you talk about the 84, you don't increase, I understand that. I do. by the same token, it works the other way too for the ones that are left.
Yes, and this court voted two years ago to increase it for everybody. And that's why we ended up at 3688, because it was zero at one time, until two years ago, I think. And then last year, we changed the plan to increase the deductible. So, half our employees are gonna get a benefit by not paying 3688. The others are gonna get year three of our insurance either going up or costing them more out of pocket. I just don't see how that's right.
It's like always is, do something for one that affects somebody else. I don't care what it is. It really affects down the line, being there for children.
Sure. Now, last year, we did implement where the policy. Now, last year, we did implement where, uh, the policy, the tax policy that if your employee, if your spouse has, uh, insurance is provided, or they can get insurance at their employer. We did push that pretty hard, and I think there was a hundred thousand dollars that we saved from that last year. Because I don't remember the number of employees' spouses who went out to their employer insurance.
Oh, well, I'll take a little bit of budget again and help them charge. And granted, I understand that, I know we have some, some of the others, that's all. Thirty-six dollars is cheaper than more or less, even if we went with, if, if we paid employee only. They're gonna spend that thirty-six dollars roughly, not always, so it's gonna stay a while.
That is about three people at McDonald's right now. That's about three people at McDonald's, three meals at McDonald's.
Well, if you're gonna pay the employee, they're gonna have to take that in, they're gonna take that thirty-six dollars and have to put it towards what their dependents go up.
That's my point, right?
The employee is included in all the dependent coverages. I don't know if that's missing.
What do you know about the, what do you know about the opting out program? So where the counties say paying the employee a certain amount for them to find other coverage for their
Yeah, I know, yeah, I know what you're talking about. Now, keep in mind, employees are not required by law to take the insurance. You just cannot incentivize them to go elsewhere to find coverage. Because then, if it's an employee who's already sick, they're gonna come back and hit you with a discrimination lawsuit. Um, so it's, it's a very fine line. And typically, we mostly see that in, and, and keep in mind, the sixty-two counties that I work with. Um, I have one of the highest instances out of all five different regions within the state of having, um, retired state employees, either DPS or Texas, or prison guards within the commissioner's court or an elected office within a county. And because most of them, if they give up their state retiree benefits, they can't go back and pick it up later, they go ahead and opt out of the county's insurance. So you're not, there is no employee who is required, whether it be appointed, elected, or regular employee, that is required to sign on to the county's insurance. You just cannot incentivize them not to take it.
And we do have a few employees who, um, are not on our insurance.
I have one.
Yes.
Yeah. You also can't, um, incentivize, well, and in this case, because I, I do have it, I do have it happen. I've, I've got a county clerk in another county. Her husband is currently a DPS officer. And she opted out of the county's insurance, and she's on his state insurance. And the county said, well, if you do that, it's cheaper, so we'll pay you to help pay for the cost to have her on her husband's insurance. You cannot do that. The coercion, you know, all of this comes to play, and we have to be really careful with those who have had a major illness in the past, like cancer, um, or have some sort of, uh, medical condition to where it would benefit you if they came off, but it, you know, won't benefit them, or certainly not someone else.
That makes sense.
And then the other one is with, because we have a lot of employees who are sixty-five and over that are still working for, for Texas counties. You cannot incentivize them or even say, hey, you know, this would help us if you went off our insurance. You cannot make those comments, because that's definitely age discrimination. And I can guarantee you, you will get sued. We've got two counties right now going through.
We were very lucky, we helped them through.
I'm with you on the, paying the entire employee only, I just can't see adding that burden to the others. I understand that, but
My opinion, we're here for the employee.
I agree. And really, you're affecting that employee if you raise their rates.
But a little bit of, on option one, I don't use the employee only for three to forty-nine. You have thirty-six, does it? Or is one twenty-two include the employee?
It includes employees.
What was the question? I'm sorry.
On option one.
Okay.
Does, does one twenty-two say employee and child include the employee?
Yes.
Yeah, all of them.
Nevermind.
Good.
You'll vote to yes.
He's talking about the state, after ten years, you have state health insurance rest of your life for free. Costs you nothing. That's a benefit.
And honestly, because of the sheer number of state retirees that we have, that's kind of one of the big issues that we run across, and literally. I've got a county up here that does not offer benefit, insurance benefits. A, because they're under the fifty, so they don't have to. But because they have so many state retirees, their thought process is, well, the state's gonna pay for it, so I'm not gonna make my taxpayers have to pay for it. But then that leaves those that aren't with no options. So, you know, it, it, it's, it's really kind of a fine line to look. And I would much rather do health insurance renewals than budget.
And you're speaking to us during.
Yes, I am.
I'm willing to compromise, but it will end up costing the county, you know, end up costing the county thirty-three, one ninety-two. With paying the employee only and leaving basically option two, but removing the, us picking up the thirty-six eighty-eight amount for the employee only. I don't want to raise the rates on the other employees.
Which option you say?
You said two.
I'm sorry, it's basically option one, but remove the employee only, the county pick up the employee only. It would be an additional thirty-three, one hundred and ninety-two dollars if I did the math right that we would pick up. I just, I don't want to raise the rates for the other employees. If we're gonna cut, if we're gonna pay for the employee only, I don't want to raise the rates for the other employees.
I must, what piece is it about?
Thirty-three thousand, one ninety-two. Am I off?
Miniscule. It's okay.
Better mathematician.
This is all the fireman.
Judge, I'll make that motion, that we do option one without the employees paying anything for their insurance.
You think that's how good you?
Okay. It's option one. The county absorbs the increase, right? All the, all the employees keep the same except the county pays the employee only. It's back to zero for the employee only. That would increase, with the county pays an additional thirty-three thousand.
If you do look, coming out fully agree, the county should pick up the employee only. But thirty-three thousand, it's still thirty-three thousand. But maybe if that was given, boy, so I second the motion.
All in favor? All right. Thank you guys for sitting through this long one and, and working so hard on this.
Excuse me, but that, does that include keeping the CSI employees?
And, uh, does that include keeping the CSI in place with your motion? Your second, all in favor of that? The CSI, county specific and stuff. Um, we're not done with insurance. You just thought you were done.
Hey, as soon as I finish here, I'm headed back to Roby. So I'm from Roby, that's where I grew up, so I'm headed back there.
Court, discuss and consider approval of renewal rates for medical and retiree prescription care, prescription drug coverage.
No, the rates stay exactly the same.
So that should be easy? That's another tax helpful incentive that we have as, for our association, that's the best in the country.
And for, for the tenure commissioners, this particular program is just strictly for the post-sixty-five retirees who are no longer working for the county at all. They are completely retired and no longer on the county's insurance. They, they are the only ones who can enroll in this program. And it is a Medicare supplement, it's not primary coverage, it is the Medicare supplement. And for the plan y'all have, let me make sure that I'm reading this right. It's the Plan F, correct? It's where
I've never even been told anything.
Yeah, I think, I think so. It's, it, it literally limits the retirees out of pocket. This particular plan, they cannot get, if they go to a local insurance carrier for a Medicare supplement, this plan is no longer even offered on the market anymore.
I knew it was a very good plan. I did not know that all retiree plans worth this plan.
Um, no.
Okay.
No. No. Um, like, my parents, because they retired before this happened. Um, the, the new regulations went into place, and they get their supplement coverage through Cross Blue Shield. They have the Plan F. If they ever, if mom ever misses a payment, it's automatically dropped and they don't have that coverage. So that's, and like I said, it literally, a one and a half million dollar, dollar medical claim, they pay twenty-five dollars. So I, I would suggest keeping it as long as you can.
There's another benefit to the retirees, isn't there, for nine dollars a month, that they can, they get
And that's ten dollars a month?
It's ten dollars a month, and employees cannot opt out.
The WEX program?
Oh, no, no, not the WEX. The WEX is Cafeteria Plan Administration.
Okay.
Um, they do, or, uh, yeah, the one you're talking about is the Manage My Health.
Oh, yes, yes.
Um, they have options of a telephonic doctor's visits. Um, it has its own wellness program that is built into it. The thing with this, if you opt in to the Manage My Health with that ten dollar extra payment, um, if you are not paying a hundred percent of the retirees' coverage, um, because most of my counties do not, they offer the, the, the plan. But the group does not actually pay any portion of coverage of that monthly cost. It's a hundred percent on the retirees. So in that case, they cannot individually opt out.
There's some great benefits with that.
It, it is some, it's some great benefits, looking at it from this perspective, that would be the one drawback is just because I know there are some retirees out there that can't afford the extra ten dollars a month, it's really hard for them. Um, is, is the only drawback, because once y'all opt in, they cannot opt out.
They're talking about.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Now, if y'all are paying a portion of it, or paying all of it.
We, we pay between fifty to sixty percent depending on age.
If someone goes from sixty-nine to seventy, do the rates go up?
Mm-hmm.
For us?
For us and for them. Yeah, I believe you have the, the spreadsheet in the packet, and so it can see what the retiree pays versus what we pay. And last year, we absorbed the retiree four percent increase.
Oh, that's what, I'm sorry.
Last year, the county absorbed the retiree four percent increase.
Right, and there's no increase this year.
There's no increase this year.
Unless we pay for the ten dollars.
Correct.
I'll make the motion to go ahead and approve the renewal rates for medical and retiree prescription care, prescription drug coverage.
With the ten dollar additional?
There are some that had it and some that don't on that.
Um, currently, it is not being offered.
It's not being offered.
Yeah. This is, this is a brand-new benefit that will go into effect this year.
How many retirees?
Sixty-ish?
Yeah.
You add them?
Yes, I can add that.
So it's six hundred a month?
A month.
A month.
So, because it's ten dollars a month.
Okay. It's a motion in a second. All in favor? All opposed?
No, in favor.
You're in favor.
Four to one.
Okay. All right, now we're done with insurance. And we're doing no action on D, the sheriff's fees. Court, to discuss and consider, don't.
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, I think our ambulance service guy is, you know.
I would just want to, on behalf of employees, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jason. Court, discuss and consider an agreement for RFQs and new construction to help in, helping it in EMS. So, uh, had a meeting with, uh, Chapman Firm, and there's a lot to do on all of this. They're willing to prepare the RFQs to go out for the, uh, They're willing to prepare the RFQs to go out for the, uh, engineer or, um, architect, um, but they need another agreement signed to do that. And that's, that's pretty involved going up for RFQs. They'll prepare the RFQ and bring it to us to approve and all of that. So that's what this is, is another contract. And she said that it'd be, uh, no more than five thousand for that and that would come out of the RFQ signs as well.
Judge, to make motion that we allow the agreement for the RFQs in new construction of health unit and EMS with the county attorney's approval of the contract and your signature.
Give me a second.
All in favor?
All right.
Thank you. Court, discuss and consider posting job vacancy for Skerry County Health Unit Director's position and timeline for the receipt of applications thereof. Got heard back from Kyle. It is the one that Dana turned in, not the, uh, other one that is the job description. The first one was for Cindy Wright and it's, uh, the one that Dana turned in is the more recent and accurate. So if, if that's something you're wanting to look at, go ahead and fill that position. Need to know what kind of timeline we're looking at on taking applications.
I think with that type of application, we're going to need to go out till the first of December.
Sixty days or so, sixty, seventy days?
That's not going to be an easy one to fill.
Any other thoughts?
Well, the last court made a look at and discussed it, we have sixty days.
First Tuesday of December?
Okay, that would be December sixth.
Okay. So I'll make motion that we post job vacancy for Skerry County Health Unit Director position and timeline and the receipt of the application thereof would be December the sixth of weekend.
All right, do you want to do, well, we can, we'll do, look at it on that day. All right, is there a second?
Oh, very.
All in favor? Thank you. All right, court, discuss and consider an agreement for Managed IT with Visual Edge IT. And we'll also have them talk about data recovery while they're, uh, talking about that. We can vote on them separately. We have John Leiter, Kelly Lannan, Elaine, I gosh, what is it?
Gary.
Gary, I knew that, I'm sorry. With Visual Edge, and they're gonna give the presentation.
I just read it.
Oh. It sure is. You notice there's no Y in there?
Yes.
All right, sorry.
Yeah, you can move that where you need to, John.
I was amazed you could stand up here that long with nothing.
Yes.
As y'all know, the Managed IT would be to, uh, assist Jeremy as he's doing his IT stuff.
And he does need some.
Sure.
I guess y'all could pass some.
Where we go them?
Okay.
The sheet we don't have.
The sheet we don't have.
Where you're gonna have to shuffle.
So instead of going through the agreement page by page, uh, judge and I decided the best way to attack this would be to put together a summary. Go through it that way. But if you have any questions, um, on the proposal, uh, please go through the course. Before I even get started on this, this isn't going to be anywhere on your page. And I wish he was here, but when I first started working with the county, a lot of times we get pushback from anyone working IT because they think that we're coming to take their job and get rid of them. And, um, I've told Jeremy this probably twenty times. I've told the judge that this, that's the farthest thing from the truth here. Some of our most successful partnerships are with a current IT staffer person. And that's kind of marrying up and basically doing what they don't either have the time for or, um, stuff that maybe they don't want to do. So behind the scenes, um, I can tell you, Jeremy being by himself with twelve locations in the county is, to me, and I work with a ton of counties, is mind-boggling. So, um, he definitely needs the help from my point of view. And, um, we would love to partner with you guys and with Jeremy moving forward. So just wanted to throw that out. So Visual Edge IT, I'm gonna talk real brief about some of the advantages of working with us. Number one, total management of your IT environment. If, basically what I say is, once we get inside the walls of the building that has to do with IP, um, we can help cover that. So workstation, server, storage, anything, firewalls, I mean, anything. So we have, we have the experience to help with that. We'll proactively manage your network through Visual Edge IT Network Operations Center, which is called a NOC. And then we also have a Security Operations Center, which is the SOC. And I always joke, it's just like what you see on TV, you have Sanjay sitting behind four computer monitors. And he's just watching for issues to come up or things to happen on your system. So we would alert the county if that's going on. We put security on all of your devices. Uh, we have a national footprint with a local presence. I know a national footprint doesn't mean anything to you guys here in Snyder, but what it does mean is we have the resources to pull in from other areas for different issues. So, uh, one thing I like to say, and I've worked at other MSPs. So if there's a cybersecurity issue, let's say you guys get breached. Other companies I've worked for, they would have gone out and pulled a couple of employees and had them go out and attack that. With Visual Edge IT, we're large enough, we have our own cybersecurity department, division. But that's all these guys do. So, um, if you get breached, you're gonna have a team of professionals that, that's all they work on, come and try and take care of that. Um, we are a Microsoft gold partner. I'm not sure of the count of how many gold partners there are across the country. But due to our size, our national footprint, um, what that allows us to do is get resources to help you guys out with questions, with designs, um, lets us bump to the front of the line if we need to on different things, so.
So if we have a problem with Microsoft, just call you.
Let us know. So, is, and by the way, Microsoft owns the world, so, um, no natural competition for Microsoft.
You can imagine the difference in wait time between calling, calling us where we've got a service level agreement versus calling Microsoft and trying to get help from Microsoft, because it's, it's almost impossible.
I think the realized scenario would be, you know, switching of employees and adding in, you know, demonstration of the accounts and making sure all that's smooth and the communication and all the, uh, red tape that you have to get through to get the authorizations.
Okay, thank you.
Realized, right?
Absolutely.
And then the last whole point there, just purchasing power of a national organization due to, so us working with Hewlett-Packard, Dell, different antivirus providers, just because of the sheer size of some of the stuff that we order from them. They'll work with us and we'll get pricing breaks, uh, different public deals that we can deal with them as well for pricing, so. So now jumping in to the actual agreement. This is for the Managed IT. Um, I'll, I'll get to the other one after we get this done. But this is what, this is basically Jeremy's assistant is what we're looking at here. And so what we decided, um, in sitting down with Jeremy and the judge is, um, we would have remote monitoring and management on all of your workstations, your firewalls, server, storage, everything. So twenty-four by seven by three sixty-five, we're watching your equipment. What that means is we come in, we put a software on their continuum that allows us to monitor, but it also allows us to, um, jump in and help if we need to remotely. So, um, the other portion that we'll put on there is a product called Sentinel One Endpoint Protection. And this is the, the one part where I'm gonna get a little pecky, but it's such an amazing product and we're talking about cybersecurity. Sentinel One, if you look at it compared to an antivirus, it's an antivirus on steroids. Antivirus, if it notices that there's a certain virus or new ransomware that's out, it'll fight it if it comes to it. Sentinel One will actually go out and look for a fight to try and eliminate something before it even happens. So the best example I can give you, let's say Judge Hicks, for a hundred days, he has Sentinel One. For those hundred days, for three hours, he comes in and works on his computer and then he takes a break. Doesn't move a lot of data. On the hundred and first day, all of a sudden, in the middle of those three hours of work, just a ton of data is going off his computer. Sentinel One is smart enough to say, hey, this isn't normally what Judge Hicks does. What's going on? It'll give us an alert. We'll reach out to the judge and say, Judge, are you moving a lot of data off your computer? If he is, fine, but keep going. If not, then we've got something going on. So the Sentinel One product is simply, it's amazing. So we use it internally. Use it internally at past companies I've been in, it's kind of the gold standard as far as that. There's another one called Carbon Black, but both of those are just great products. So that'll be on all your equipment.
What are part of the glitches that you faced with this particular software?
With Sentinel One?
Uh-huh. Problems that it might cause or has caused in the past that you've recognized with other people, that are other counties or other industries?
Um, when we first put it on, there's usually a little adjustment period, so.
I mean, you're not missing emails, missing?
No, no, this, this, uh, um, the software that we put on has a very light footprint. It doesn't take up a ton of resources. So again, with any change, um, yeah, we're gonna have some adjustments. Some people are, um, we may have to figure out, maybe they don't have enough RAM on their computer. But, um, for the most part, it's very light footprint.
So this is installed, installed on the servers only, it's installed on each and every workstation?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, it'll be pushed out to your servers and the workstations, so.
One of the, uh, one of the other benefits of that is the ability to, uh, to push out, uh, the patches and, and, and updates and keep that computer continuously updated. And we, the continuum actually verifies those patches and updates before it pushes it, pushes it out. So it's an additional security feature in addition to the Sentinel One product.
So when you have computers in the county that are so old that Microsoft doesn't any longer support that with the hatches, now what do you do?
You need to purchase a new computer. Time to update. And I wouldn't advise you to go pay for Windows eleven or ten.
How many of those have you had? How many have you had?
None, I don't want to get that far.
You used to have computers that-
Microsoft doesn't.
That wouldn't, they wouldn't patch them any longer because of the age of the, of the program, yeah.
Yeah, if there's any Windows seven-
Uh, we've had them, I'm telling you.
Computers in the county right now, you're wide open to-
Everything.
To the world, yeah. So.
And so whenever you're considering budgeting, computers is not one that you need to relax on, right?
Uh, no, and that's another spot, I mean, I don't want to get too far off. That's another thing we can help with is lifecycle management.
Yeah.
And that's one of the things I'd sold or tried to sell to the judge is, like, all this is great, but sitting down with the county four times a year and then one final time around budget to say, this is what we need over the next eighteen to thirty-six months. So the, the only surprises that we want are if a building gets hit with lightning and it blows out a switch. But to come in and all of a sudden, we have to replace twenty-five workstations, we don't want to do that. We'd rather have it on a rolling cycle toward, you guys know, each year within-
That's a good plan.
So.
Keep them under warranty and all the considerations around that.
Gotcha. When you come in-
Standardizations.
I mean, when you come in, will you help us identify those that we-
Absolutely.
That are too old?
Yeah, that, that's exactly why we're here. You'll notice on the agreement, the start date is January one of twenty-twenty-three. It'll take us a solid forty-five days to get you onboarded. And with December, half of that month being gone to Christmas and holidays. Yeah, so we're gonna come on and, um, there's, there's a program we have internally, it's called IT Blue. And we put all the information of what the county has into there. So it'll give us information on how old your systems are, the healthier system. Let's say you have a computer, it's gonna tell us that it's banked out on storage, on data, and, um, maybe they were thinking of adding Windows eleven to that. We're gonna say, no, that'll completely throttle it. Yeah, we'll be able to help with, with all that.
Thank you.
So.
And then you show twenty-one servers. And more and more, people are going to the cloud as they figure out that it's not that unsafe to do.
Correct.
People are scared of that, the cloud, or were, or didn't even understand what the cloud was. Does that price go down, that monthly price? If you're not having to watch, now you're down to ten servers to twenty-one, is that a price reduction? Do y'all, do y'all do your estimates that way for the monthly cost? Is-
Very, very loaded question. So the, the first thing I would say before you even considering that is taking your servers and moving them to the cloud, um, with your guys' internet speed. I, I don't know if I would cross that bridge until you guys have a landline coming into the building. Because now you're sending stuff to the cloud and backed down to get information. And you may be able to save money by going to the cloud. Because yes, we do, um, our, our pricing structure is by how many servers you have. So if we can reduce that footprint, absolutely, it'll save you money. But last thing you want to do is spend a bunch of money to move stuff to the cloud and now you have a hundred and something employees that are frustrated trying to get their job done. So, but there's, most people will sell you the cloud in a big hurry. That, to me, that needs to be completely vetted before that's even considered. So, yeah, definitely not until you guys get a, uh, a fiber hardline into the building, so. Right. So, but I, I wouldn't do it currently. But yes.
Hopefully that won't happen sooner or later.
And let's say even with your current servers, your physical ones that you have on site, let's say we come in and after we get in here and we've been in your environment a little bit, and we can come to you and say, okay, you no longer, you can decommission this server. Yes, that will lower your, your monthly.
Awesome.
So thank you.
Good, be better. One more question from me.
Yes.
On page ten. We specifically disclaim any and all warranties expressed or implied, including but not limited to any licensed products. Nine to ten, yes, sir. I'm sorry. It's at the bottom. The page nine. Explain whenever you, or you can email us or whatever that means.
Yeah, unless, uh, you can speak to that, Kelly, I'm gonna have to, because mine would just be a guess.
Yeah. I mean, I'd really have the real answer, so you can email us and email the judge or whatever. I just want to know what that means. If it, if it means what it sounds like it means, and surely it doesn't, uh, that's kind of scary. I mean, if you're selling us products and there's no warranties. I mean, surely that's not what it means.
The way I understood that a lot was essentially, we're buying you a product that a lot of times has a going warranty already included inside of it. So the warranty wouldn't fall on us to be able to practice it. But that's the way I- But that's the way I.
Yeah, that, that's, that's the way I interpreted as well, but I'd feel more comfortable if I gave you an answer that I knew one hundred percent of.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Sure. And I could probably get that before, before you read it.
And that's, and that next sentence as well. You know, usually I understand that you're not liable for loss of profits business, goodwill, data interruption of business, nor the incidental or consequential merchantability or fitness purpose nor damages related to disagreement. Usually there's an unless, you know, in, in a contract between firms or counties or whatever that states unless, uh, it was something that was our fault or our, by, caused by our negligence, something like that. You mean, if something happens that was, that was caused, that hurt the county because of something that was done by one of your associates. Then it looks to me like it would be a compensation to the county for that.
And you're going to see me look at this gentleman here.
No, I, I, I agree with that a hundred percent. And, and if there was an incident where, you know, we were, we were at fault.
Yeah.
That's whenever our cyber knowledge kicks in and we would, you know, we would, we would remedy the situation.
That's great. And so just like the.
And by the way, this is my manager, so if you have any compliments for me? Send them out. If you have any complaints, just send me an email. So, um, so we'll look on those two.
Thank you.
You know, appreciate it. So you got those. And then he kind of already talked about it a little bit, so I'll be brief, preventative maintenance. Uh, a lot of times Microsoft send out patches and maybe more damage than they do fix them. Um, that's the benefit of using us is we'll vet those patches before we send them to you. So we'll let other companies and other people break them, break their equipment. We'll hold on to it and send it when it's safe to send it.
And that being said, we also have problems sometimes for software companies that sell us some financial products and other products within the county that deem that the problem that we're having is our fault. And we need you to be able to show them, as others have in the past, that no, it's your fault. And you need to fix it.
There, there's a very quick way to eliminate that.
Okay.
And, and, and we've been on the bad side of this as well because you'll get one company that says it's their fault and they throw the ball over. As soon as you get all three parties on a phone call, all the finger pointing ceases.
That is good.
Because now you're accountable. So, and that's one thing I would say, if we're working with you and you are going to do a software upgrade, the moment you know that you're going to even try it, bring us in.
Thank you.
We, we want to know what's going on nine months before, instead of nine days before and you tell us that we're doing an upgrade. We can help you with the requirements. We can help make sure you have the correct equipment. We can help with the cut over. We can have one of our internal people available for the day that it's going to be cut over or changed. If something goes wrong, now we have a resource that's here just for that.
Right.
So, yeah, from the jump.
Yeah, is that a initial charge?
No.
Okay.
That's good to know because we do have a massive changeover. We're in the process of that right now.
Yeah.
And we have two that are fighting with each other and blaming everybody.
Right, so.
Bugging each other.
I accept it.
Yeah. They're never at fault.
Yeah, you and I have talked about other counties before, uh, Hockley County, we had a huge, huge deal. And, um, it was funny that when we all got on the phone, it was kind of done.
Very silly.
So, yeah, it got very silly. So now, um, so moving forward, so we have seventy-seven of your computers with what we call essentials coverage. What that means is it has remote monitoring and it has the Sentinel One on there. And then those seventy-seven computers, those will kind of be Jeremy's. Maybe he's going to look after those. So if he needs any help or support, remote or onsite, that is billable. So then we have twenty-three workstations that have premier remote twenty-four seven. Those are going to be your sheriff's office computers and your EMS computers vet. So when Jeremy goes home, they, they have to be at twenty-four seven. So those twenty-three computers can call in at any time and get remote support. And let's say they call in and they're on the phone for two hours, get an issue resolved on their workstation, that's covered. It's not a billable event. The only time that is billable is if we cannot figure it out and we have to come on site. On-site is billable. We do have plans where onsite coverage is included. But what we didn't want to do is charge you guys for that. We don't have anyone come on site for seven months and now you've paid for seven months of onsite support that you're not using. We would rather come back and cross that bridge later on. And that's one thing Visual Edge IT is better about than a lot of other companies. We're not going to try and make you fit into our plan. And if you need to go outside of it, the, no, you're here till the contract ends. If something's not working, but let's take a look at it and see what we can change.
So it'd be particularly with some skilled hands already on the site in Jeremy. I mean, so you've got our subject matter ac, uh, experts, you know, on the phone, they can troubleshoot together. You've got someone who's, who's here who can, you know, physically unplug, plug in, you know, make, make changes or, or adjustments, right? To do all that prior to trying to send someone on site and all that's covered.
Would, if, if it is a, a call out that you need to come, um, not necessarily, if someone called in the middle of the night, but someone calls at eight o'clock in the morning, I'm having this issue, we can't fix it over the phone or remotely, um, Jeremy's unavailable. What's your timeframe I'm getting here? Is it going to be that day, that evening? If, if it is evening, is it double time or time and a half or that, that's a concern as well?
It's best effort.
Okay.
It's best effort, but we have, uh, you know, we've got a, a team of, of engineers, we got a guy in Lubbock, we got a, believe it or not, we have a cybersecurity expert in Cross Plains, Texas, of all places, where he, uh, where he lives. And so we've got local people. It would just be a, a, a best effort to, to dispatch the, the, the first available. Whoever can get here the fastest.
And it's so much mile and so much per hour is the way it works?
It would be all. Go ahead.
To, to my knowledge, that's included in, I, I could be wrong.
Narrowly right. Narrowly right, yeah.
Okay, so it's just billable as hourly regardless if you're driving or whatever.
Right.
And then the other part of that is there, there's going to be a different response time if you have a workstation that you need to get up and get going. And maybe it's not a frontline workstation as compared to the firewall is down in Scurry County and they're not getting internet. So, but those are going to be two completely different.
Sure.
Situations.
Sure. Just, we've been in a situation in the past where called early in the morning and it's, we won't be there till after about o'clock. And that's every time.
Yeah.
And that, that, that's made a problem because it's just as if they're trying to get that extra time and a half or double time or whatever it was.
If we're sending, the, the less we can have people on site and the more we can do it during business hours if we do, um, we're, we're saving the county money. And in transparency, that's how we make money. So.
Okay, our, our business model is aligned with, with yours. You, you want uptime, we want you to have uptime. So we both have the same goals.
Thank you.
And then, uh, down below that, the, the last few bullet points, um, you have your twelve servers and then your twenty firewall switches, et cetera, UPSs, um, they changed that out, but that's your uninterrupted power supplies that we monitor and they're under the premier twenty-four seven, um, coverage as well. So any remote, um, let's say Jeremy calls in, having issues with firewall and we're walking him through, showing him how to fix stuff. It's an hour and a half call. That's included in the cost of the, of the agreement. So. The one-time onboarding is four thousand one hundred and fourteen dollars and eleven cents. And your monthly investment after that would be four thousand one hundred and fourteen dollars and eleven cents. So, um, the, the benefit of going with a managed service provider compared to just hiring an employee for that, you would probably be able to get a workstation specialist that maybe knew a little bit about servers. With us for that cost, you get subject matter, subject matter experts in, in each workstation's server storage, cybersecurity. You're never going to have to worry about us being hired away. We don't take vacations. We don't take sick days. We're here around the clock. So the, the value that you can get with us compared to just bringing on a single employee is exponential. Any questions? Thoughts, concerns?
Just to kind of add on to that, I mean, if you think about IT in general today, it's so, so vast, right? I mean, you've got cybersecurity, John's point, you've got network, you have cloud, you have servers, you've got desktops. I mean, to know all of that, I mean, it's, it's almost, I mean, it really isn't, it's impossible. So that's why we've got subject matter experts in all these fields that can work together to bring that value to, to you instead of just hiring one person who may know just a little bit, right? So.
So I assume that y'all have identified every computer that's in the county? And seventy-seven is the total? Are we, this is seventy-seven that we've decided to put these services on?
Seventy-seven plus twenty-three is still a hundred.
Okay.
So, yeah, and there's always no fail. This is a best effort to this point. Once we, and this is the, the forty-five days that I was talking about, about onboarding you guys, that number, yes, will probably most definitely shift.
Okay.
So if it goes down to ninety-five, then the, the, the monthly agreement's going to decrease by, by five workstations, whatever that per cost is. If it's higher than that, then yes, it'll go higher. So, um, but this is in my conversations with, with Jeremy and the judge, this is the, the number that we came up with.
And, yeah, cause I was going to say, you know, there's lots of us that have computers that we don't have sensitive information on those computers and use them mainly for research like commissioners. The judge probably has some data on his that certainly that he would need to, but there, there are several that you could identify within the county that doesn't need to have a lot of services online.
Yeah, and, and they broke those down and said seventy-seven is going to be the ones that Jeremy has.
Gotcha.
Had identified.
Yeah, gotcha.
And twenty-three is the one still have the higher.
Makes sense.
Are y'all vetted with CEGIS compliance, all that kind of stuff through my office?
Yes, so we have, currently have employees that are CEGIS compliant. And, um, here pretty soon, um, Kelly is going to be putting together a thing with Judge. Uh, we end up doing business with you because we have to be sponsored by a county or an agency. And so if, if we do end up signing the agreements, then, um, we're going to have quite a few of our employees.
For fact clearance? You're talking about through fact? On your fingerprint clearance?
Yes, yes, correct. So I'm just, so they're all CEGIS compliant. So, but yes, we do have.
Okay.
Multiple, multiple employees right now that are.
Okay.
CEGIS compliant.
We looked through a very similar thing with the city of Abilene here recently. They had hired us to do some project work when we came in with a team of subject matter experts from different parts of the country, and they all had to be. But the city of Abilene is sponsored by it.
Okay.
But we just can't go do it on our own, by ourselves.
Right.
And then say we're CEGIS, we have to have someone to.
I got you.
To sponsor any JESI, so.
Thoughts, concerns for advanced IT? Does it, uh, is it, the Sentinel, is it capable of catching ransomware? And before it gets to the, an email?
Yes.
That's cool.
Now, is it going to catch all of it? Every single thing? No, I mean, I could come in here and.
It changes all the time.
If you could give me the choice of selling you guys a million dollars in cybersecurity hardware or we could train all of your employees to be human firewalls and teach them how to click through and get that free phone. Give, give me, give me the human firewalls. That, that's the main vector right now. I'd be able to get in is social engineering and emails. And so, um, and then this is kind of a cruel statement, but it's the truth. I can't fix stupid.
Curiosity kills the cat.
Yes, you, you can have all the things that you want in place. But if you get someone, like I said, that's going to click through and win that trip to, to Mazel tov, but there's, there's nothing we can do to stop that.
Got you.
So, but yes, that's what the Sentinel One is there for. And your normal anti-viruses, they have certain signatures that they're looking for. And if they recognize that signature, it'll catch it. Sentinel One will catch new stuff that's, that it just thinks is weird and it'll put a stop to things. So.
Thank you.
Antivirus has to be a known virus out there.
Sure.
Right, for, in order to prevent it.
Yep.
Unfortunately, there's, you know, it's, it's, it's an everyday occurrence, that new and creative ways to, you know, to, to get in to hack someone's network. That's why you need that advanced endpoint protection.
And that comes even without the cybersecurity. That's good.
Go ahead and tell us about the data backup.
Okay. And you guys have copies of that?
Yes.
Can you correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, one thing before I jump into this model, you know, so let's say that Jeremy was your IT director and you had a staff of five people under him. Even if you had a full complement of an IT department, this right here, the cybersecurity and the data backup is a completely separate service. So I, I just want to make that clear that this wouldn't be solved by hiring additional people. So this is still needed for your data backup. So, um, as I jump into this, um, so our backup disaster recovery is built on, uh, however you pronounce it, data, DDo, platform. Um, the DDo platform is the gold standard of, of data backup disaster and recovery. So, um, what one example I'll give you, unfortunately, it's right here in your backyard. Uh, you recently had a situation where a month's worth of data was not being backed up in one of your offices and was not able to be recovered. And, um, the county did not get any alerts that this was taking place. With a, with a data, a DDo backup, um, if it has a bad backup or a misconfigured or there's a corrupt file in there, it's going to alert us. It's going to tell us that that, that just took place and we don't have a solid backup from that point. So, and that's something that we can adjust. The ability with the, uh, DDo to get your information spun back up is, is, I want to say it kind of happened, it's even more than that. And so when we talk about that, let's say worst case scenario, storm rolls through here and takes out the sheriff's office. Um, our ability to get the data off that DDo machine and get your, um, information into a different location. So let's say they go set up the sheriff's office at the local high school gym and we're up and running within twenty-four hours. So something like that. With the DDo backup, you have, so you would have your information on the sheriff's servers. You would have it on the DDo appliance and then we're sending it, um, securely to the cloud. So you have three different places where your data is being backed up to. And that's usually what they want is at least three different locations. So when it's sent, um, to the cloud and when it's in the cloud being stored, it has what's called two hundred and fifty-six bit encryption. And what that means is there's a two hundred and fifty-six bit password that would take someone a lifetime to break. So your data. So your data's safe in transit and when it gets to that other facility. So we have a DATO appliance here that we're proposing for the county building or for the courthouse. And then we have one at the sheriff's office as well. So that's there. Also included on this is the breach prevention platform. What this is, is some cybersecurity training. Our annual training does satisfy House Bill 3834 that requires all the county employees to have some cybersecurity training done. Go on, take the test, print your certificates, evidence in the state and you're covered. The best part about this is you have a weekly micro-training. It's a three-minute video, so I'll access it through the web, three-minute video followed by a four-question quiz. All of these videos are on new scams that are coming out. It's not old, ten-year-old stuff. What it does is it keeps cybersecurity top of mind with everyone. I make my 24-year-old daughter watch these videos with me just so she can understand what's going on out there. And then the next time you have an employee that goes to click on something, they're gonna think, well, I just saw something on that and maybe I shouldn't click this. Because again, if I can get everyone to be a human firewall, that's where we wanna be. So also included in there, there are policy and procedure templates. There's a section in there to where if you do have a data breach, it'll walk you through how to detail everything, how to list everything out. Because the big thing right now is cybersecurity insurance. It's very easy to sign up for. But then if you have a breach, they're gonna come out and all of a sudden that fine print's gonna come out and they're gonna ask, have you been doing these 25 things to stop that breach? And if you can't say yes to everything, you're not getting that cybersecurity check to make up for that loss. So this will help you and will help you walk through that. So on that one, onboarding investment is $1,859.94. The monthly is the same, $1,859.94. Any question on that one?
Does the videos you speak of, does it pop up on your computer and you can't go any further with anything else? It stays on until you utilize it?
But it's the only way you're gonna get them to watch it. Three-minute video?
I mean, we eat our own dog food on that deal. We're our company, we utilize the exact same thing. And I believe John was the administrator, will have access to, you know, a portal. So Jeremy could know who actually watched the video, who did it. But it's not gonna prevent anyone from continuing to work. It's just kind of a best practices type habit that you wanna create within, you know, within the county to raise that awareness, to create those human firewalls, that's what John was talking about.
And no, if you're in the middle of a video and a call comes in or you gotta do some actual work, you can get it right out of it. Another thing I forgot to mention with that, so let's say that you identify a group of ten clickers who just click through everything. You can set up a simulated phishing attack, send it to them. And when they go to click on that, it'll bring up a screen that basically says, you just earned yourself more training.
There's ladies in our office in Abilene that are in that.
I got it once and so. I thought it was an AT&amp;T bill. They make these things look so legit. So I go and click on thinking it's my AT&amp;T bill and all of a sudden I got, you just doing a class on Monday.
Thank you.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
So we initially talked about doing this October 18th. And then we got to talking about timelines and the 45 days that they need. We would like to have it in place January 1 and that's what we were looking at, is the timeline on it. Forty-five days for them to do what they need to do and then with the holidays coming up. So that's why we moved it to today to look at. So you're aware of that.
Well, definitely think the managed IT services is very, very important for us as well as the data, the data backup and the disaster recovery platform for the sheriff's office. I am, I'm not completely convinced that we need the breach security. It's not that much money. And we've got great training from TAC and they are constantly upgrading that. I know that the course I took this year was a lot better than the course that we got to, or a lot more involved than the course we got the previous years. The only thing about this one, not only does it do that, but it also, I just wonder how many employees actually completed that before the deadline.
Go back to that, that would be a Jeremy question at this point.
And so if only 20% are doing it, then they're not being reminded until the next year about this.
And this one, I think.
And this one is reminded constantly. And they are getting smarter and better as all of this.
It does have a dashboard where you can go and see who's taking it. What a lot of companies will do is you can go in, you create a nickname for yourself, a mock. Some people just put their real name, but it's almost like bragging rights of who has the highest score. So it all depends on how involved and how much time you have to commit to the program. Like anything, the more time you can put into it and set it up, the more useful it'll be. But you're right, if only 15 or 20 employees are going in and using it, then.
Not very good.
No.
Until the legislature puts some teeth into that legislation, I mean, right now, you don't get your grant money. Big deal, we don't, we don't ask for grant money for it because TAC gives it to us. And I'm sure they will at some point. Get a few more ransomware and phishing attacks in the county, the cost of money, they'll put some teeth in it. And people will start doing it later. That's what I was wondering. There you go. Of course, not all of them are that way. That's the way it should be. I mean, I think all the rest of it is definitely meaningful. Yeah, I think that TAC has done a great job on this part of it. I'm just not sure how many people are actually utilizing much free.
Right, I don't know. It's what, $65?
Yes, and so $650 or.
All right, well, a little over $100. Something about, I mean, that's definitely.
And that can be added, I assume, at any time?
Yes. Good question. I would think that we would, it's good to have information that you can present to people that they know what to look for. You said that it's all new stuff that's coming out, all new attacks that are coming out. And they're coming out with them all the time. I can see it as a benefit that if people will use it to be aware of what's out there.
Then let's track for a while and see if we get a percentage that's worthy of $65 a month to do it.
And we can send out reminders that you need to look at these occasions.
All right, so I make a motion that we go ahead and allow Benchmark to become our company's IT services and for cybersecurity and data backup.
Thank you, I'll get those signed, I'll look at these other, these things that came up. I'll put it to County Attorney about that and her work.
I guess you need the authority to sign it, like.
Yeah.
Has he already looked at the contracts?
Okay, we're gonna, no action on EMS policy, personal changes, or some other stuff that's come up. Court, discuss and consider to Skerrit County investment policy changes. We, yes, we are. So the investment policy, the only thing that's gonna change on that is going from, four, page four, down at the bottom collateralization. It was 110%, we changed that last year, we're gonna go back to 102%. We call it collateralization level required will be a minimum of 102% of the market value of the principal. Can you explain the reason why?
I've just visited with Daryl and we've talked about a couple of things. He's over collateralizing this right now, way above the 110% even. Right now, he's preparing for property taxes when I very visited with him. So we just have a conversation and he helped explain some things. And so I recommend lowering that to the 102%.
Make a motion with the Skerrit County investment policy is presumed.
All in favor? Court, discuss and consider a resolution for bullet-resistant shield grant program. This is a grant that's through the office of the governor and it's for, just what it says, bullet-resistant shields. And that would be a flood through the sheriff's department. October 1st is when they present that, right? Or when they award the grant?
No, well, I think it was initially, I think they've moved it. It's part of the same one that we've got the vehicle through.
Yeah.
They pushed that back to June of next year, so when they put the, when they disperse the money. But I don't know when this money will come. I think it's gonna be quicker, I think they're really trying to push this out.
Right, and I think a lot of it is donated money, if I'm not misunderstanding. The money for the shields was donated specifically for this cause or?
Yeah, I think, I think both, I think the state threw a bunch of money at it and it's a bunch of money that I think there was donation as well. They're not getting them, from what they told my guys yesterday, they're not getting a lot of participation in it for whatever reason, I don't know why, they have a lot of money.
Yeah.
I mean, you certified it yesterday, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so we should be, it's done, it's submitted, we should be good to go, so.
It's 100%.
Yeah, it's 100%, there's no match, it's nothing, it's.
Is this some type of full body shield or something?
No, it's, well, there's both, there's handheld shields. What I've asked for is for each one of my deputies. And then there's a big one that is basically on wheels. If you're in a hostage barricade situation that you can point that. But the ones that these, my guys will carry are, they're just, they're just a upper body shield, ballistic shield. They're bulletproof, they have lights on them, they're pretty effective, pretty neat pieces of equipment.
Is that your motion?
Yeah.
Second.
We'll all need to sign this resolution. All right, court, discuss and consider appointing a board member to the Raleigh Flans Water Improvement Association. That one, I'm not sure about, what's the story on that, does anybody have that story? Okay, thank you.
I'm the reason, it's okay.
Okay.
The playoffs, CD, which is the faithful president. And for them, they will have a permit for Skerrit County. The people that were here, they will have it. But they need a board member from Skerrit County. They meet once, maybe twice a year, early January to discuss the water matters. And Tommy Henderson, capital form of credit, is agreed to be that one member if the court feels appropriate.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor? All right. Let me write that name down, because I just forgot already. Court, consider approval of treasurer's monthly report for August and personnel.
Are there any questions for me on that? Yes, lots of information, good time to review where our cash position is and where the financials are as we go into the end of the budget season. But we ended with a cash position of $12,862,898.27.
Position would be this time of year?
It's about where we were last year. There are some significant differences between where we were last year and this year as far as fund balances go, so. Take a look in that and see. And then personnel. Added positions and had some people leave and we're very busy. There was a position, or a time where the court board outside the office was almost full without the positions.
Yeah.
Good, I make a motion that we approve the treasurer's monthly reports for both, the treasurer's report and the employee pension.
All in favor? Court, consider approval of line item transfers in budget needs.
Okay, the first one, I'm transfers for the district clerk's office, bonds and owes $150 out of lease rentals and the bond price one, so it was two other things to add. The next one is the jail, $1,600 and the medical fees, medical fees out of operating supplies. The medical bills for the inmates were increased this year. The next one is the senior center, $200 into the sewer line out of the food. Heart is ground supplies, recently $749 out of heart maintenance and materials and repair. The extension office and the FCS travel, which is bondless travel, $39.50 out of the A and R travel, which is freight travel. And then road and bridge precinct three, medications, $250 out of road material and construction. And precinct three again. What is that thing? What do you think?
No.
I don't know, something meals, I think. Non-travel meals, $1,000 out of road material and construction.
Thank you, please.
Then the budget amendments, there are four. This first one is a HADA, it is to move money from the, the grant money that we received in 2020 for Skerrit Grant, we received $120,000 just to use it before December of this year. So this is putting in $16,780 for the pulp packs, new pulp packs. Then the next one is golf course, $1,500 into repairs, maintenance and maintenance. This was, she's placing the donation that she got into that. EMS, the other equipment, $9,138.60. This was, he already went through the process of getting permission for using Texas class funds, but we had not done the budget amendment. So this is moving, doing the budget amendment for the Texas class funds. And this is also EMS $36.50 for the Stryker chair pro that had also had already been approved in court. But we're getting like any voice at a time because it's a good piece of.
Okay, Councilor Pabell?
Councilor Pabell's $878,970.22 plus a city bank deal that we're still trying to collect from everybody of $15,225.11.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Tag it.
All in favor? Thank you. Everybody.
Taylor, did you need a copy of that, sign the resolution for the grant? I haven't signed too, so I've got originally.